I call this December eighth, two thousand twenty-five work session of the Helena City Council to order. First item of business review of all twelve eight twenty twenty-five agenda items. Uh, first on there is AP bill payments, uh, which we've all received. Has everyone had a chance to review?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Any questions or comments?
Yeah, I have, I have a few.
Okay.
I think, um, and I know I may sound like the Grinch.
That time of year.
And I think this may be, this may be, be helpful, but I think they're about eighty-four hundred dollars worth of identified expenses related to, uh, tree lighting and the holiday events this weekend from those that I were, I was able to see. I guess the total cost for the holiday activities, I would like to be able to see that, uh, in the form of a proposal versus it being itemized after the fact. I can't determine if cost overrun has occurred for the holiday events, but it's just helpful understanding that we're going to, uh, be on a shoestring budget in years to come of having a better itemization beforehand. We have the expenses, like for example, I may not be able to clearly see, but the expenses of overtime for employees, I don't know if that's here or if it carries forward to the next month, but that's not here. But just from what's here, they're about eighty-four hundred dollars worth of expenses. Uh, I'd rather focus on the expenses versus some of the other issues. Uh, I think Kathy challenged me and I didn't ask to verify, uh, and I'm committed to doing this, but when we have events, a form that helps to make everyone aware that this process is moving, I think it's helpful. So whether that, uh, helps to inform the police, the fire department, our volunteers, having a form that moves through the approval process, I think makes our ability to host events a little bit easier and less convoluted. And that is not a reflection of any one individual, it's just an opportunity for us to do something a little bit better.
I hundred percent agree. I've already spoken with, uh, Chief Wood about that because I think there's a couple of different factors. The weekend, first of all, was a success, but between the new administration, some new, um, some things off the cracks without people getting notified. Um, and so by putting in something that's required to be presented to, uh, department heads in my office fourteen days before an event, what are the first responder needs? What are the times, what traffic effects may we have? And that's something that I think would be a good time to implement when we do the final appointments to, uh, each, uh, each of the different boards and committees. And then that liaison carry that message and say, okay, these are the ones we've got coming up. We can, we can put that in place. I think it's a, a pretty easy, easy lift and it would benefit a lot.
Along with that, um, beautification is going to potentially do a post-mortem.
Okay.
To see what, what the council can do better.
Yeah. And I think again, that, that's no knock on anything. I thought it was a beautiful weekend and volunteers did a great job.
By, by all means, one hundred percent.
Billy, do you know what that payment to Volker is for that says Buck Creek used tax?
Can I, I don't have that, Cassie. I know Volker is also helping with the Buck Creek Trail System. My guess is it's related to that. Um, okay. Yeah. Volker's got several projects ongoing with the community.
What? We're just kidding.
You are.
Think I answered within fifteen seconds. You did answer a lot quicker than the attorney.
It's been a rough weekend, everybody.
Any other questions or comments on, uh, AP and bill payments? Moving on, uh, review of, uh, the eleven twenty-four twenty twenty-five meeting minutes. Uh, any questions or comments on those minutes, any changes?
I think we did a good job of changing those between the two meetings.
Okay, uh, moving on to our next item, updates from council boards and, uh, committee business. Would you like to start any updates from?
Uh, I'll start. I have two, uh, kind of two that kind of mingle together. Uh, talking with the farmer's market and, uh, what used to be DNI is now begin, gonna become One Helena. Uh, I reached out to Ms. Tisdale in the, uh, middle school to help us come up with some designs for possible selection of T-shirts. So, uh, for the coming year, for the, the events coming up. So that's one big thing and, and I'm working to work with Brian, uh, to make sure that One Helena is in the ordinance because it is not currently, DNI is not on there, so we had to add. But, uh, it'd be nice to see what the art, we told them it'd be after the first of the year, probably February when we actually see some designs, but we'll pass it in front of the board and everybody will have them come in and present it and make it a show the artwork of the students.
Thanks, Andy.
Yes, sir.
Any other council or board updates? Uh, beautification board put on a good tree lighting as we just mentioned. Uh, you know, it's always, always a fun event to.
Very successful, yeah. Um, and the historic preservation board, they had a booth in the event this year and we actually contacted sixty people came by to check us all out and look at the museum, which was huge.
Good. It's awesome.
No, I'm planning and zoning it. At this time, we have one item on the agenda next week, uh, Thursday, the eighteenth. Yep. Uh, and, uh, library board, we're having our meeting next Thursday, uh, yeah, next Thursday. Yeah. This Thursday. Yeah. But, um, and that's all I have for the two that I serve as liaison to. Uh, moving on, uh, our next item is discussion of the SHBB lease and service agreement. This is the, uh, baby box, which, uh, we're looking to put at fire station number two. Uh, I know Kathy and Attorney Hayes have been having some discussions on that, so I think we're.
Yeah, it's pretty much, there's one little heavy I were working through with their team right now. And we added some language being municipality under Alabama law, things we have to, so, um, it's done that. It's, um, back to the fire police, both teams, and we need to refute it and stuff like that to make sure they can, you know, adhere to the term and the requirements that it has in there. So, um, everybody feels comfortable, so.
Okay.
Do my council members have any questions or concerns about it?
No. See if you put it, please.
Yeah, that's, that's gonna be a.
It's gonna be a huge.
Good thing to have for our community.
And the surrounding communities.
That's right, yep. Uh, discussion of Resolution twelve oh eight two oh two five admin, shifting, uh, twenty twenty-four B bond funding for new city hall project.
If you guys want to pass this along down. So, I guess about two weeks in, um, we received some invoices from, uh, US Steel and I think, oh, no, Latham, and I became aware that we had exhausted the A bonds balance, um, that there was no more money left in the, in that bond account. Took me, I didn't want to come to you guys prematurely until I was able to get my arms wrapped around the project and let each of you guys kind of know separately in different conversations that I was investigating that. What this boils down to is it's a frustrating situation to say the least, um, but it's got a pretty simple, uh, a pretty simple origination and how we got here. Uh, the prior administration focused on the construction cost of the building of being eighteen million or so, and it's the contract prices for eighteen seven. The issue that was not readily made available or discussed was there's five point eight million dollars in, uh, site prep costs, uh, that were not included in that eighteen million dollar figure. Um, the total project cost for the new building is, uh, a hair over twenty-four point five million dollars. Now, the original funding of the construction account was about thirteen and a half. Once the eighteen million dollar bond, there was a four million and about four or five was, um, returned to us for, um, reimbursement for those calls that we incurred prior to the bond being issued. Bottom line is we need an additional three point three million dollars to finish this project. Um, I understand that this is not at all where we would want to be pulling the funds from, but we are coming down to the wire to get this building open and we've got to be able to pay these bills. Uh, I worked with Volker to, uh, make sure that we had a accurate cost to complete at this point. Um, and then I verified with US Steel any remaining, um, site prep costs or additional billing that would be coming from US Steel. So at this point, and on this spreadsheet, and I can scroll down on the screen for y'all too, I've broken out the project cost summary, which you'll find in the top left, um, and then as the total spend to date broken down by hard so, hard costs, site work and the soft costs. Now this spreadsheet, as things have been changing today, um, as I'm looking at this, this total site work was what, where it started this morning when I was putting this sheet together. And as I began to ask a few more questions, I realized at the five eight, so I do need to update the spreadsheet because the site work is coming in at four nine. And again, that's just an example of how, um, how, how things are ever changing with this. But after making phone calls all morning and early afternoon, I believe that the top project cost summary is pretty close. I would not expect there to be any material changes to this, but I would expect it to fluctuate a little bit. The one thing also to note is there is a contingency fund refund. They basically put aside about an additional five hundred and fifty, five hundred and eighty five thousand dollars for contingencies. We still got approximately five hundred and fifty of that left. However, we did put through change orders for the utility board, which is going to make that space actually function properly for the utility board. And then we also refurbished one of the offices on the first floor that will be our magistrate office. So those change orders have to go through. I went extremely conservative with us only having three hundred and fifty thousand left. I, I don't expect those change orders to come in at two hundred thousand, but I wanted to err on the side of caution. Any questions? Yes, sir.
My questions aren't necessarily about, uh, your report. I, I think it's commendable for you to be able to take this on. Uh, my challenge is, uh, we should, or we do have a municipal financial advisor. Uh, there should be an official statement connected to, uh, this bond being originated, this warrant being originated. And for me, it would be more helpful if we had a work session of those people in the room to take some of this pressure off of you trying to convey a very complicated issue, uh, that you truthfully were not here to deal with. Most of us were not. Uh, I understand the sense of urgency of wanting to get this completed, but I also understand the importance of information that we don't have, that's not in front of us right now. And a lot of that information again has to do with, uh, those who were in the room who made this come to pass, being able to answer what I, what I believe should be some very difficult questions from probably quite a few of us.
I'll be happy to put that meeting together and get, uh, Raymond James to come to speak to that and try to answer those questions. Uh, however, Raymond James was brought in, this was, project was not handled the way that those projects that you probably are aware of and have experience with in Birmingham. Raymond James was brought in significantly after the fact, and they haven't as much told me that they were not, um, privy to a lot of discussions that were going on surrounding this project. Uh, Brad Green with Raymond James has been excellent as a resource. Um, I'm sure he will be welcome opportunity to come to speak to council and address your questions, um, and hopefully shed some additional light, but this was not a situation where they were involved from the beginning of this project. Um, the other challenge is there's not a one stop. Our project manager with Volker is managing the construction side of this. So therefore that's what caused the discrepancy this morning because I knew we had some bills that were waiting to be paid from US Steel. And when I called to see if those were in his total cost to complete, they were not because he didn't manage that aspect of this project. So I think what you're looking for is someone that had been here from the beginning that knew all pieces of this puzzle. And what I found over the last several months, or not several months, but several weeks in trying to investigate that is there really wasn't someone that was running point that knew every aspect of this project and had a holistic plan.
Right. So again, an official statement brings all of that to a central location and that's a document that must be produced.
Okay.
And I have to trust that we have one because the underwriters needed something to say that we could pledge our revenue to pay this debt.
Okay.
Uh, so at a minimum, that should be available. That document alone should give us more information than we currently have, uh, just in general.
Yeah.
Uh, number two, uh, I think it's, it's AMBAC, the American Bond Corporation. Uh, I don't know what the requirements are for them to basically, uh, insure a bad deal. Uh, but if this leads to a bad deal, I don't know under what circumstances, but we need to be aware of what our insurance allows. Uh, this is going to be a tough, tough, tough issue for all of us, and I'm not going to, to sit and underestimate the impact it's going to have on us to have to deal with this because at some point this shifts back to the residents.
Well, it, it shifts back to the residents with this ordinance or resolution because we're pulling from, uh, one bond to pay, finish another project.
Right. But in terms of the lack of completion for a sports facility, and I'm saying this respectfully, you know, the anticipation of is different. People can't miss what they don't have.
Correct.
But to, to the extent that there's going to be an expense associated with this, we're going to have to go to citizens and ask them for something, which means that more money is going to have to come from somewhere at some point, or we're going to have to cut.
Um, we're going to have, I, I, unless I'm missing something, councilman, we're, we still have ample funding in this sports complex bond to be able to move forward with that project. Now it will be in a lesson, when you take over ten percent of the bond, you're going to reduce what you're able to provide, but in terms of an ask of the citizens come in and carry additional financial burden, I'm not following you on that train of thought.
Well, we already went with the one cent to add that to help recruit.
Pay.
Pay your bond. So looking at this and having to reduce this, I mean, we penalize the parks. I mean, I know it's just early for you today, but how much in your top, just brainstorming, have you seen that we're gonna cut from the park that we were gonna do up here at Coleman?
The ask for tonight's ordinance is to transfer.
Right.
Three point three million from.
What does that reduce for the, for the?
So goes from twenty-seven to twenty-three seven.
So we're gonna lose a couple of fields out there.
We're gonna have to, we're gonna have to look and go back to the same holistic approach that I was gonna take with the complex.
Right.
Looking at where we can afford, what can we potentially do to minimize the extreme cost of the site prep, uh, for those fields? Um, see what we can do in our existing parks, if there's any spot where we have reduced site prep costs that we could get more bang for our buck. Um, we're just going to, it's going to take us stretching that a little further.
So we're gonna, the, the kids, and I'll use that, you know, like I said, I tell people, I don't have kids in the sports com, in sports here, but the kids are gonna suffer for one person's controlling of all this budget, all these expenses at one time.
Yes, the sports complex budget with the passing of this resolution will go from, um, twenty-seven to twenty-three seven.
Okay.
Now, in the event, we went with three point three, the way the resolution raises up to and not to exceed three point three.
And I want to commend you on this today.
Anything that is, anything that is.
I want to commend you on this. This is a hell of a lot of work in a very short period of time and we thank you for it.
No problem.
I just know that there was a lot of stuff in my prior administration that we were promising these kids that we were gonna look at this, and now, again, I think the backbone of the society is gonna be penalized and that hurts.
No, I agree and I understand why the citizens are gonna be frustrated, but, uh, again, this goes back to where I started this conversation. This, the, the, this project was billed and, and communicated to our community with just the building construction cost. The total project cost has not, was never communicated.
Right.
And I've reviewed the contracts and it's not that I believe that the contracts were done wrong. Well, they, they weren't reviewed by our council, which is an issue, but I don't believe that there's been a, a large overage on any of these items. The building is coming in toward, right at where the contract, the contractual, uh, obligation was set at eighteen seven, eighteen six five, somewhere in there, and we're getting money back. We haven't gone through all of our contingencies. It was a communication issue and a transparency issue like we all ran on.
Right.
That, you have your building cost and your project cost. We as a community only knew the prop, the building cost. So marrying those two together is what we had put together this in front of you, this up on the screen right now.
I'm, I'll say some blatant misrepresentation from the current, the previous mayor in a nutshell. That's why I haven't said anything because I'm beat red.
As I, you hide your color better than I do.
We're left with a disaster financially and we're trying to make the best of it. And again, I commend you, like Andy did, for pulling this all together. And as we sit here on this board, we're not going to let our children suffer. We're going to do everything we can to make sure that those promises are facilitated as best we can for it at this point. It all comes down to what the money is.
I still am optimistic because we, we have not spent a lot of the series B bonds. There's been some design work done, which I have put a halt to, um, in terms of how we move forward with the sports complex project. In all honesty, I haven't gotten there yet. We got a meeting with Robbins Morton later this month to sit down with our Parks and Rec Department, the designers, the engineering firm to look at our options. And what we're gonna be looking for is how to minimize any costs that don't produce something for our citizens to use. If there's a way to utilize those funds that doesn't involve removing dirt, blasting a mountain, that's the route we're gonna go. Now, realistically, that's initial meeting I hope to be able to bring to the community and this body sometime in the next, middle of first quarter next year with some options that we can discuss. So I, I believe that what we're proposing, it does not affect our debt obligation that we had prior to this knowledge. We still are gonna owe the same amount of money biannually that we owe now. It's a question of how do we take a, a fresh look at the project, the sports complex project and move it forward? It, from, from where I sit is how I'm approaching this.
Yeah, I just wanted to go back to an earlier point you made. Uh, the soft cost, if, if I'm not mistaken, are more professional services.
Correct.
And I, and I heard you very clearly, and I can say personally, I would appreciate you making sure, like you said, if it's not putting something in the ground or turning dirt, then you want to see how to minimize that cost. But we have quite a bit of soft costs and at some point I would like to see all of those agreements.
Okay.
Mayor, I commend you and Attorney Hayes for going back and looking at all this and, and getting us to a much clearer picture of where we are with it. And, you know, I, I guess the frustrating part for many of us and, and obviously many citizens in our community is that we were asking a lot of these questions over the past couple of years and, you know, here it is in front of us now and costs incurred, expenses. And costs incurred, expenses that had already been paid before we knew they were being paid, we're still left with the ticket, you know, left with this bill that we've got to pay before we take possession of the City Hall building. I feel like the only path is to, is, is, this is one of the hard decisions we knew we'd have to make when we were running for office.
Agreed.
And it's, you know, the next step will be, when we take another look at the sports and leisure component of this project, see what we can do to stretch that dollar, you know? Listen to some of our citizens, you know, what are some additional grant opportunities we can pursue, that type of stuff, to stretch our dollar, to stretch our citizens' dollar, to build out that part of the Lena Ford plan. And it's gonna require some thinking caps and some work sessions and, you know, public comment. But it's where we are, and, you know, this is, this is what we gotta, what we gotta address.
Yeah. I mean, at the end of the day, we've got, we've got our contractor who is owed the money for the work that they have performed. We have other bills that have come due, whether we like the agreement or don't like the agreement or like the outcome, the work has been performed. And we are unable to, to meet those obligations right now without this funding.
Madison, I'd like to add too, just real fast on that one. I want to make sure that the prior council, some on the prior council was not aware of this either. And I just, not everybody was given a lot of this information. I just know there was two in particular that fought this as hard as they could at the beginning. I just want to make sure that we lump it into one seat at the table.
One seat?
Yeah, that seat you're sitting in from the prior, prior administration.
Maybe he can come in here and explain it.
Make a phone friend if you want.
No, we could do this without him. We're gonna be positive.
Yeah. We can't undo what's been done, we have to make the best of what we have going forward.
Thank you, Billy.
Yep, no problem.
Thank you, Mayor. Any further discussion on 2024, I'm sorry, 1208, 2025, Admiral? Seeing none, our next item of discussion is ordinance 1034-2025, Pelham Board of Education deannexation. Attorney Hayes, I'll let you start that conversation.
Not much to say about it. It's the deannexation, there's one parcel of property that was at the top behind Pelham High School, it was approximately over 50 acres. The parcel's being subdivided, the high school's filled, soccer field, there's a little bit of land. My fairies just inside of it that pass up to a neighborhood, so it kind of squares off that piece. So that'll fit into the annexation part. You know, GIS will have to redo it, but it's been surveyed. Come through all the processes being surveyed, everything like that. The remaining, I think it's 32 or 39 acres, is staying in Lena under current zoning the way it's always been. So it's, it's, there's an issue of, and, you know, where it's clearly in Pelham, and their first responders and their police hire handle that, their school system handles that. So I want to thank Pelham for sending the letter over to Board of Education, not the city. You know, there's things run together. But it's, it's a, it's a good thing, and it clears up liability from our side on emergency services and stuff like that.
And as it is, that parcel's landlocked other than the Pelham school property and the residential.
It's totally, it's behind the softball field. And this is kind of, you know, this worked before, when I had a high school. The softball field was in Lena, and we deannexed it out, it's the same with the soccer field, we just want to deannex it out.
Any questions or comments from council? Okay, moving on, confirmation of the next meeting. I know that one will be the week of Christmas, as it is now, December 22nd. What's everyone's schedule looking like? What were you thinking for that one?
You know mine.
Yeah.
I'm available.
So I'm available on the second, but 23rd and beyond.
Okay. Mr. Councilman Healy has reached out to me with a schedule in conflict. Would, would everyone be open to looking at the week prior?
Next one?
Yeah, that would be.
Anytime that week.
15th, 16th, or 17th, we have planning and zoning on Thursday, the 18th. Do we have any statutory board or committee meetings on, orders on Tuesday? Okay. Monday or Wednesday?
I don't know what the agenda requires, and I know maybe our, so. I don't know what the agenda may look like for the 22nd. But assuming that there's not a lot for us to consider, I mean, for lack of qualms, we can cancel the council meeting. So, I mean, I'm not suggesting that, that is an option. We can, I mean, there's a process by which we do that, but, you know. But considering that we have an, that we have an ordinance that will be read for the second time tonight, I don't know why Councilor Healy would be out, but by chance, if he's sick.
Yeah, you can say that.
Because our other ordinance is gonna be, that'd be no less than two meetings a month. So if we cancel that meeting, we're short on that ordinance.
I can always call him.
That's, that's, I mean, do we have?
You don't count form.
So.
Sorry.
Are you available on the 22nd?
I am available on the 22nd.
So four of the five of us?
Yeah.
You okay?
Yeah.
Maxine?
I'll be here.
Listening?
I still have this formal meeting, you know, it's scheduled.
We'll play.
Well, look at that, Josh, he's a good attorney.
The only thing I could say would be a second reading. As far as legal stuff, that's covered.
Yeah, that is.
All right, we'll plan on keeping our existing schedule for December 22nd at 6:00 PM with a 5:00 PM work session. Any additional questions or comments from council? Seeing none, this work session is adjourned.
I'm sorry.
Begin with our invocation and we have Pastor Rudy Guest from Helena Methodist Church.
Let's go to the Lord in prayer. By the God, we come to you tonight, first of all, to give you praise. We thank you for the gift of this season that reminds us of the deep love that you have for each of us that you sent your Son Jesus. We know that tonight there are those that are being recognized and we pray for your blessings upon them and thank you for the gifts and graces that you have given them. Lord, we pray for those first responders that serve this city. Pray your protection around them. And Lord, we pray for wisdom for this council in the decisions that are before them. Grant them your grace to make decisions that are led by your Spirit that brings further health to this city. And may all that happens tonight be guided by you and bring glory to you. We pray in the name above every name, Jesus our Lord. Amen.
Thank you Pastor Guest. Next is the Pledge of Allegiance and I'd like to call forward Reece Unoffitt from Team Council.
Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Reece. Next is Council Roll Call, Madam Clerk.
I'm sorry, Wilson, I can't read today. Wilson.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is Revenue Report and AP Bill Payment. We've reviewed those, discussed in the work session. Any other questions or comments? Before we move into, request a motion to approve the Revenue Report and AP Bill Payment.
I'll make a motion that we approve the Revenue and Bill Payment.
Roll call that.
Yes.
All right. Okay, yep. I'm sorry, I missed the presentation of minutes from 11:24 2025 meeting. We've reviewed those. Request a motion to approve the minutes. All right.
Second.
Roll call vote.
I'm abstaining since I wasn't here.
And Hamon.
Next up is our Municipal Operations Report from Mayor Billy Rosner.
Thank you Council President Dodson. First, I'd like to start by what a great weekend we had in Helena with the tree lighting and the parade. It was a little cold Friday and I wish the sun would come out a little bit more on Saturday, but it was a great day and a great way to kick off the holidays. Big thank you to the beautification board and the parade committee along with HPD. Helen Police Department helped out and all the other city employees that made sure that it was a success. Update on the Highway seventeen fifty eight turn lane. It's got an estimated completion date of mid-January. We do, in your council packet, there was a change order for about thirty thousand dollars. That is, was due to some utility conflicts where they had to move some lines unexpectedly. And also they found some unsuitable soil that they had to bring in additional material for. The train app that we've been discussing or heard about for a while, we are probably sometime late spring, early summer before that's done. The equipment is going through the procurement process right now. Installation will take six to ten weeks. The calibration period is about five weeks. Then the app will go through a beta testing period of one to three months. So hopefully midsummer, we'll have that up and out to the public to be able to be used. The library just finished installing the new shelving, the first phase of the new shelving. The, the second phase is going to begin soon. And Dan wanted me to let you all know that he was very grateful to be included in the parade and thought you all did a great job also. The dock down at Joe Tucker Park. The, the dock down at Joe Tucker Park has become to our attention is not suitable for the public any longer. I'll post pictures once DJ gives me those pictures. Some of the support pylons are not even reaching the decking. We're going to have to rebuild that. However, I did determine that we had ample funds in the Parks and Rec Impact Fund. Right now it's sitting at about three hundred and fifty thousand. So we should be able to use those funds to rebuild that dock. I'm going to get multiple quotes. Thinking it's going to be between forty and fifty thousand, but as of tomorrow morning, it'll be roped off, no longer open to the public. And it will be demoed sometime in the next two to three weeks. Good news on the Parks and Rec front, we thank you to the Shelby County Commission. We got a grant for Kahaba Lily Park for sixty seven thousand dollars that is going to help renovate those bathrooms. So we should see movement on that, I would think, in the first part of next year. But thank you again to Shelby County Commission, I think Commissioner Beard is in the room somewhere. Thank you, sir. Budget update. So my goal coming in was to do an exhaustive detail analysis of the budget and I'm working through that. I underestimated the complexity due to some of the outdated systems and inability to get reporting. I'm the first to say that it's taking a little longer than I'd hoped. I also was not quite aware of the time strains that I was going to have being pulled in other directions with other priorities. But I am working diligently on that. I hope to be able to get a special called meeting next week where I can go over the budget with you all and discuss and then maybe potentially have it ready on December twenty second. That is a goal, I still think that's a lofty goal, but I'm working towards that. And I'll keep you guys abreast of where I'm at with that. The one thing I do want to do is I do want to thank prior council for pausing this budget process and allowing us the opportunity to review it. One item that was found right out of the gate was in our budget meeting back in, not ours, but the prior council and mayor's budget meeting back in September. It was stated, maybe it was September, stated our reserves were at two point eight. That is not the case, our reserves are at one point four million. We, there were some funds included in that two point eight that were restricted that prior to the end of the year were transferred to their current or the proper buckets, reducing the reserve to one point four million. Positive note on the budget and the finances. We had our first demo from a ER, new ERP provider. I mentioned in our last meeting that we had a quote of approximately seventy thousand dollars for that first year implementation. Well, we had a demo, it lasted three and a half hours and to say that our team was wowed by what technology can do these days is an understatement. I think you can see her nodding. And it's, it's realistic for us to do that. I know we're tight, but if we don't find a way to invest that seventy thousand dollars next year, we are going to be facing some of the same problems, not being able to get you the information that you need to properly guide the city or allow us to make day-to-day decisions. Implementation will take approximately twelve months once we move forward with that. But I have, through this budget process, as I alluded to in the past, I put together a spreadsheet. We've got some reports that we're able to translate through ChatGPT. It's going to allow me to, at least by the second meeting of every month, provide you a, a year-to-date spend of where we're at against budget. So I'm working towards that. It's not a, it's not a ultimate fix, but it should bridge the gap between where we're at now and us getting a new accounting software in place. City Hall update. We already went over the project cost, for those that were not in the room. Project cost is coming in at twenty four point five million due to additional site prep costs that was not originally communicated. The timeline for that project is they're waiting to order the materials. Right now they're going through the drawings and putting together the cost estimates on the new materials that will be needed to make the architectural corrections on the front of the building with the columns and the eaves. They project that they're going to have that documentation all tied up by end of this month, order the product. Last estimate I was given was eight to twelve weeks for that product and then a four to six week installation period. That is putting us mid-spring at best to be able to get into the new building. I will continue to provide updates. We are working with them and pressing them as hard as we can to get that product moved up in the production cycle to allow us to get started a little sooner than that. And then finally, just a reminder, this Thursday, we have public comment on the Helena Road fifty two intersection from four to six. That'll be here in the council chamber. Alabama DOT will be here as well as our engineering team from Gresham Smith to answer any questions that the public may have. Do you have any questions that I can field from council?
Not this time.
Thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you Mayor Rosner. Moving on to the next item on our agenda. Recognition of Helena High School teacher Derek Depoy, two thousand twenty five Shelby County Teacher of the Year. This is a great achievement for one of, one of the teachers here in our Helena High School. And I've got a recognition, a statement of recognition I'd like to read out and I'll, I'll join you down there on the floor in a minute. Yeah, 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 I'll wing, wing, wing back be down there. I'll go ahead and read this real quick. If you want to go stand with me, yeah. Whereas commendations and congratulations are hereby conveyed to Helena High School Mathematics teacher Derek Depoy for being selected as the Shelby County Schools two thousand twenty five Secondary Teacher of the Year. And whereas representatives of the city of Helena recognize the invaluable contributions Mr. Depoy has made and continues to make to students in our community and their respective futures. And whereas since joining the faculty of Helena High School, Mr. Depoy has taken on the challenge of teaching two advanced placement mathematics courses as well as serving as the school's mathematics chair and serves as a member of the data team. And whereas Mr. Depoy serves the school and students in additional roles such as senior SBA sponsor, as well as launching the teacher-led Hilltop Heroes Initiative to recognize both honor graduates and the teachers who served them. And whereas faculty and students have observed that Mr. Depoy sets the bar high for his students while instilling in them that everyone is important and can be their own person. Now therefore be it resolved, Mayor Billy Rosner and the Helena City Council do hereby recognize and honor Helena High School teacher Derek Depoy on being recognized as the Shelby County Schools two thousand twenty five Secondary Teacher of the Year. Next on our agenda, we have two more recognitions. This is for Helena High School Cross Country Team athletes Camp Herndon and Audrey Rigdon, who placed as top fifteen finishers in the Alabama six A Cross Country Championship Meet. I have a rec, a recognition statement for each of them and I'll begin with Camp Herndon. Whereas commendations and congratulations are hereby conveyed to, well, if, if Camp and Audrey would like to come forward, they may.
Billy, you want to go stand with him too?
All right, let me start over, this is only my third meeting. Whereas commendations and congratulations are hereby conveyed to Camp Herndon of the Helena High School Cross Country Team for placing in the top fifteen at the two thousand twenty five Alabama High School Athletic Association Cross Country Championship Meet at the Oakville Indian Mound State Park on November eighth, two thousand twenty five. And whereas representatives of the city of Helena recognize the pride and honor that these student athletes have brought to our community through their training and commitment in the sport of cross-country and running, beginning as youth club athletes with Helena-based Iron City Speed and continuing as members of our local Helena Middle School and High School teams. And whereas Camp Herndon has emerged as a team leader on the Helena High School Cross Country Team and attained multiple successive personal records throughout his career at local and state high school meets and beyond, including the Running, Running Lane Nationals High School competitions. And whereas he is a junior at Helena High School and capped off the two thousand twenty five season with a tenth place finish out of two hundred fifty eight runners at the Class Six A State Championship Meet with a time of sixteen oh nine point oh four, setting a new personal record in the five K distance. And whereas the top fifteen finishers of each division rise to the podium at the AHSAA Cross Country Championship to receive a medal, recognizing their achievement in the most competitive field of the season. Now therefore be it resolved by Mayor Billy Rosner and the Helena City Council do hereby recognize and honor Camp Herndon and his accomplishment on this eighth day of December, two thousand twenty five. And next, I have a recognition for Audrey Rigdon. Whereas commendations and congratulations are hereby conveyed to Audrey Rigdon of the Helena High School Cross Country Team for placing in the top fifteen at the two thousand twenty five Alabama High School Athletic Association Cross Country Championship Meet at the Oakville Indian Mound State Park on November eighth, two thousand twenty five. And whereas representatives of the city of Helena recognize the pride and honor that these student athletes have brought to our community through their training and commitment in the sport of cross-country and running, beginning as youth club athletes with Helena-based Iron City Speed and continuing as members of our local Helena Middle School and High School teams. And whereas Audrey Rigdon has run up with the Helena High School varsity cross-country team as a middle school seventh grader and eighth grader and respectively won the sectional championship each year and has set a new girls' cross-country record for Helena High School. And whereas she is an eighth grader at Helena Middle School and finished the season with a thirteenth place finish out of two hundred forty three runners at Class Six A State Championship with a time of nineteen fifty one point seven six in the five K distance. And whereas the top fifteen finish, top fifteen finishers of each division rise to the podium at the AHSAA Cross Country Championship to receive a medal recognizing their achievement in the most competitive field of the season. Now therefore be it resolved by Mayor Billy Rosner and the Helena City Council do recognize and honor Audrey Rigdon and her accomplishment on this eighth day of December, two thousand twenty five.
Awesome. That's outstanding.
Next item on our agenda is prove or deny resolution twelve zero eight two oh two five admin. Resolution recognizing the distinct, the distinguished service career and service and career of chief, of retired chief of police Brad Flynn.
Do, Brad, you want to come and stand in front of everybody?
Do I have to?
No, you don't have to. You're retired, you can do what you want.
Man, I voted for you, that's enough.
Thank you. Resolution recognizing the distinguished service and career of retired chief of police Brad Flynn. Whereas Brad Flynn began his service to Helena as a part-time dispatcher in nineteen ninety five, hired by late chief Ray Roland. And whereas his dedication to law enforcement led him to establish in nineteen ninety eight the Helena Police Explorers, a program that continues to flourish today. And whereas Chief Flynn served in the capacities of patrol officer, traffic homicide investigator, narcotics investigator, detective, SWAT operator and commander and hazmat technician over the course of his career. And whereas Chief Flynn's skills provided service beyond his community, working with the Queensland Australia Police Service, Interpol and the FBI to solve the murder of a Helena resident halfway around the globe, along with training hundreds of officers from all over Alabama and the nation in active shooter and counterterrorism skills. And whereas Chief Flynn rose through the ranks of Helena's Police Department, ascending to the role of chief in two thousand twenty where he implemented a new policy and procedure manual with Department of Justice recommendations and up-to-date standards, equipped officers with body cams, made Helena the first sensory-inclusive city in the world and, and affected positive change throughout the department. And whereas Chief Flynn has dedicated his time and energy to the city of Helena and her citizens. And whereas Chief Flynn worked tirelessly to bring awareness and understanding of those sensory or invisible disabilities and through his activism established the city of Helena as the first municipality to be recognized by Culture City as sensory-inclusive certified. And whereas Chief Flynn was instrumental in working with and advocating for both the Cade Noah Act and the Abram Collin Act, which together became state law in Alabama and now require all law enforcement officers, firefighters and emergency medical personnel to receive training on interacting with individuals with invisible disabilities. And whereas Chief Flynn served with integrity and honor in his role as police chief. And now therefore be it resolved that the city of Helena, this council, individually and collectively, commend Chief Brad Flynn for his service to the constituency of the city of Helena, adopted this eighth day of December, two thousand twenty five. I have another resolution to read.
We need a motion.
Yeah, I'll entertain a motion on resolution. Resolution one two zero eight two oh two five B admin. Resolution regarding the, recognizing the distinguished service and career retired chief of police Brad Flynn.
So move.
Second.
Voice vote.
McDaniel.
Yes.
Dodson.
Yes.
Wilson.
Yes.
Hammond.
Yes.
Healy.
Yes.
Let me read this one.
Yeah, moving on, we have approved and our resolution twelve oh eight two oh two five A admin, recognition, resolution. Authorizing transfer of city profit.
Where, whereas the city of Helena, Alabama desires to recognize and honor long-term law enforcement service to the city of Helena Police Department by awarding service firearms to its full-time sworn law enforcement officers. sworn law enforcement officers, whose firearms are in service for at least twenty-four full months prior to the date of retirement and are in good standing at the time of their retirement. Whereas this benefit will be formally part of the retirement benefits of qualifying officers. And whereas the City Council of the city of Helena, Alabama, in accordance with opinion number eight three dash zero zero four zero eight of the Attorney General of the State of Alabama, determines that it is in the public interest for establishing police firearm retirement benefit policy for qualifying officers who are its full-time sworn law enforcement officers, whose firearms are in service for at least twenty-four full months prior to the date of retirement and are in good standing at the time of their retirement with the city of Helena Police Department to receive this benefit as approved by the mayor of the city of Helena. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the city of Helena at a regular meeting duly assembled with a quorum being present as follows. Section one, that the city council hereby establishes and enacts the police firearm retirement benefit policy as follows, titled Police Firearms Retirement Benefit Policy. The purpose is, A, to establish guidelines for awarding service firearms upon retirement of sworn department personnel. The statement of B, it is the policy of the city of Helena to recognize and honor long-term law enforcement service to the city of Helena in general by awarding issued service firearms to sworn law enforcement officers at the time of their retirement in good standing with the police department. Eligibility: Qualifying officers must be full-time sworn law enforcement officers employed by the city of Helena Police Department, whose firearms are in service for at least twenty-four full months prior to the date of retirement and are in good standing at the time of their retirement with the city of Helena Police Department to receive this benefit. Good standing means that the law enforcement officer cannot be under investigation where the results could be termination, retiring in lieu of termination, or to avoid an investigation. Specifically, retirement must be fully honorable circumstances, having served the required number of years to be eligible to receive pension benefits from the retirement systems of Alabama. Each retiree must place his or her request in writing to his or her superior officer. The mayor of the city of Helena, Alabama must renew the retiree's personnel file for ongoing disciplinary action, review, excuse me, not renewed, for ongoing disciplinary action and it's authorized to approve the issuance of all service firearms upon the retirement of any sworn personnel ineligible. Each retiree receiving these benefits must execute a release of liability and hold harmless, relieving the city of Helena from any liability prior to authorizing to receive award of his or her service firearm. That this resolution shall become effective upon its due adoption, adopted this day, eighth day of December, two thousand twenty-five.
I'll entertain a motion.
Move the item.
Second. Second, roll call that, Madam Clerk.
Hammond.
Yes.
Neely.
Yes.
Wilson.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
McDaniel.
Yes.
Congratulations, Chief Flynn. Next item on our agenda is approve or deny SHBB lease and service agreement, just so that for the public's awareness, this is for a baby box to be placed at fire station number two. We will have, so we've already reviewed that agreement. I'll entertain a motion.
Do we need public comment? I make a motion that we approve the ordinance, excuse me. It's just the contract. Sorry. I make a motion to approve the contract.
I'll second.
Roll call that, Madam Clerk.
Hammond.
Yes.
Neely.
Yes.
Wilson.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
McDaniel.
Yes.
Next item on our agenda is resolution twelve oh eight two oh two five admin, shift twenty twenty-four B bond funding for new city hall project. We discussed this in the work session. I'll entertain a motion and then we'll have comment.
I'll make a motion that we approve resolution twelve oh eight twenty twenty-five admin for the shifting of the twenty twenty-four B bond funding for the new city hall project.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Any counsel comment on this decision?
Mr. President.
Yes.
To Mayor Rosner, we want to thank you for your efforts to get this in front of us. And I understand any resistance to wanting to support this endeavor could be problematic for the city. However, I do want to say for the record, I would like to see an official statement as it relates to the origination of these warrants. And I would like to ask for a work session at some point so we can hear from the advisors, the council, and those who were involved with putting these warrants together for us. That's it, Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Any additional comments or questions from counsel? No, sir. Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Just move the item.
Just move the item. Just vote on it.
Did you move?
Yeah, that was already.
That's right. That's right.
We just got to vote on it.
Yep. Roll call that, Madam Clerk.
Johnson.
Yes.
Wilson.
Yes.
Neely.
Yes.
McDaniel.
Yes.
Hammond.
Yes.
The motion passes. Next item on our agenda is approve or deny ordinance one zero three, one zero three zero dash two zero two five, council rules and procedure. This is the new rules of procedure that we've been working on over the last few weeks. We had our first thorough first reading at our last council meeting. We do have a couple of changes to it, which I'll read those out, and then we'll entertain a motion. In this, the draft ordinance in section seven, the following sentence was added, this is in regards to public member wishing to address council outside of public comment period. Following sentence was added, "The council at its discretion and upon a motion, second, and majority vote may suspend this rule to allow a public member to address council outside of the public comment period." The other change that was made was in section nine, agendas and minutes, nine point one, regular meeting agendas. This was added towards the end of the paragraph. "In the event of a state or federal holiday, in the event a state or federal holiday falls on a Friday prior to a council meeting, the clerk shall make available a copy of the proposed agenda to all the public no later than five P M. on the last business day preceding the council." I'll entertain a motion to approve or deny this rules of procedure ordinance.
So move.
Second.
Madam Clerk, well, let's see, any counsel comment on this before we move forward? And in the spirit of this ordinance, do we have any public comment on this ordinance? Seeing none, roll call that, Madam Clerk.
Wilson.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
McDaniel.
Yes.
Neely.
Yes.
Hammond.
Yes.
The ordinance passes. Next item on our agenda is the first reading of the, first reading of ordinance ten thirty-four dash two oh two five D, Pelham Board of Education de-annexation. And I will point out that we are going to recess briefly. We can consider this for unanimous consent for tonight.
Move to consider unanimous consent so that item can leave before us, Mr. President.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. I'll have all those in favor. All right, before we move into discussion, I'll have Attorney Hayes give a brief summary of this.
That's fine. Basically, this is the Pelham High School. There's a soccer field and parking lot. It was all one parcel of property within Helena. This, the annexes, soccer field, parking lot, a little bit of land into Pelham, where our base and fire help have to respond to everything. It's their responsibility. The remaining land still remains in Helena, so everything else. So it's the former Pelham School Board is asking us to de-annex that.
Okay, at this time, we will, this de-annexation requires a public hearing. So at this time, we will recess for, I'll entertain a motion to recess for five minutes to conduct the public hearing portion of this. And we will, it is six thirty-five, we will reconvene at six forty. Now, entertain a motion to, for recess.
So move.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Neely.
Yes.
McDaniel.
Yes.
Wilson.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Hammond.
Yes.
And now we will open the floor for five minutes for public comment on this de-annexation. Okay. Anyone from the public wish to comment on this? Anyone for or against it? All right, seeing none, I'll reconvene this meeting. Okay.
I make a motion that we reconvene the meeting.
I'll second.
Roll call vote.
Wilson.
Yes.
Neely.
Yes.
McDaniel.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Hammond.
Yes.
So now I will. I'll entertain a motion for unanimous consent of approval of ordinance one zero three four dash two oh two five D, Pelham Board of Education de-annexation.
I'll second. I'll make a motion that we consent to ordinance one oh three four twenty twenty-five D Pelham Board of Education de-annexation.
Second.
Roll call that, Madam Clerk.
McDaniel.
Yes.
Neely.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Wilson.
Yes.
Hammond.
Yes.
Ordinance passes. No, that's the unanimous, I'm sorry. My apologies. Okay, now, now we will, do we have any further counsel comment on this de-annexation ordinance? Okay, now I'll entertain a vote for the de-annexation, or for, I'm sorry. I'll entertain a motion for ordinance, motion to approve ordinance ten thirty-four dash two oh two five D Pelham Board of Education de-annexation.
I'll move.
Second.
Roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Neely.
Yes.
McDaniel.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Wilson.
Yes.
Hammond.
Yes.
Now, the motion passes. That's a lot of votes on one item. Sorry, sorry for my confusion there. We saved, we saved some time. Next, next on our agenda is period for, period for public comment. Do we have any members of the public registered to speak?
I have one, Mr. Doug Ingram.
Okay, Mr. Ingram. And Mr. Ingram, we all know you, but if you could please state your name and address.
My name is Doug Ingram. Address is seventeen oh one Native Dancer Drive here in Helena. First of all, I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak here. This is the first time I've spoken since last year in spring. I had the opportunity at that time to, excuse me, speak with our, during the work session of the council at that time. Each time you talk to the council or work session or council meeting, you have to present a topic. And my topic back then was transparency of the city council to the community. My topic tonight is transparency, period. This is a before and after version of the transparency from what we see now. And that's what I want to bring out tonight. You members on the council, last year, at that time, none of y'all were here. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, you were not up here. You were all about out here with us as part of the community, listening and seeing what was going on. The transparency at that time, thanks to Huey, was a summary of the council meetings, not the work sessions. Well, those of you that attend, you know that the business of this community, of this city, is conducted during the work sessions. And what I heard tonight got my attention. I had no intention of coming up here tonight until I heard Mr. Mayor's presentation of the state of the city with the new city hall. My whole point of being here is, you remember being out here with us two, three years ago, what the climate of this city was like at that time? With Facebook, there was no transparency, nothing was being said from the council. And that, what happened from that was rumors, misinformation got out there, and a lot of feelings got hurt, and a lot of people's reputations got hurt. But where we are right now, with what I've seen so far going on with Billy and y'all, there's more transparency and it continues to improve. Now, my point here for being here is to say, with what was presented tonight in the work session, you need to get that out there to the community. However you choose to do that, because you don't want what happened two, three years ago to happen again. And it can happen very easily with social media. You know how Helena is. Everybody's got an opinion and they, that's where they go. So I urge you strongly to get the information out there, however you can present it in a proper way, that the, that the people of this community know what's going on and don't let these rumors and misinformation get started, because it won't stop. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Ingram.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Anyone else sign up to speak? Okay. Next up is council comments. I'll begin with Councilman McDaniel.
I wasn't prepared for that, but I would like to say that this, this past week, there was a family adversely impacted by a fire. And I know that our first responders did their part to assist, and they may even pulled in some other municipalities to help. But in that moment, that family, without asking a whole lot, received a tremendous amount of help from this community. And that makes me proud to live in Helena and to be a part of this community. So I just want to say to the folks, you know, who stepped up to, to help them in both financial and in kind ways, thank you. That's it for me.
Councilman Haley?
Well, a lot of thank yous tonight to the athletes and the teachers, Mr., I guess they're all gone, they all left, they skated out early. What an honor to be, to be able to come up here and do this. Officer Flynn, for your retirement, Chief Flynn, for your retirement, it's well overdue the recognition tonight. You know, I came and my first night here was the night you retired. And I was like, whoo. So I am, you know, I'm glad to get to know you over a period of time since then, and this was long overdue. So thank you for everything that you did for this city, and that you still do. And one other thing, too, is I will mention, when I went to the convention last year up in Huntsville for the, one of the biggest talks was the project you did with the sensory. Everybody at that convention talked about sensory training that you put together. And, you know, a lot of, a lot of the officers know that I had to use it two years ago. And, you know, a lot of, a lot of the officers know that I had to use it two years ago for the Fourth of July. You know, a little bit different scenario, but they threw me in that trailer pretty quick. So I have my hats off to everything you've done for this city. Thank you. So I'll leave everything else to the other councils, but we had a fun weekend. Officers, y'all did a hell of a job. I don't know how y'all did all that. So thank you, keeping the traffic down and everything else, and everybody that put the parade and everything else on. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Haley. Councilman Wilson?
Thank you. I hear that the tree lighting and the parade were big successes. I appreciate the committees that were working diligently, all the volunteers that put that together. I had to miss both due to my son being in a wrestling tournament. But I believe family comes first in those situations. But applauds all of you that worked on that, and I hope everyone enjoyed it. I'd also like to congratulate Ms. Rigdon and young Mr. Herndon for their accomplishments. I was very impressed that in only the eighth grade, this young lady has accomplished so much in cross-country. That's amazing to me. And I see Mr. Herndon with his Goldilocks through my neighborhood and running all the time. So I know he's putting in the work. And I'd like to thank Mr. Ingram for coming up and speaking. You know, for me, transparency is a big deal. And what we learned in the work session today, what I consider a gross misrepresentation of facts and misleading this community. That's a travesty. I hope it will never happen again. And you have my word that everything I can, I will share with you. My door is always open. If you have a question about anything that's going on within the city, if I'm legally allowed, I will, I will answer your questions. So I appreciate that, Mr. Ingram. And that's all I got for you.
Thank you, Dennis. And I'll move on to Councilwoman Hammond.
Well, to piggyback on Mr. Wilson, which I don't do very often, thank you, Mr. Ingram, for bringing that to our attention. Yes, transparency is a big issue for us. We will continue to do that, and we will share as much information as we possibly can. How we share that, if it's neon flashing lights down the expressway, we'll figure out a way to get it out to y'all. Thank you so much for that. Beautification Board did a fantastic job with the tree lighting and the market. It was a wonderful evening. Weather could have been a light nicer, but it was fantastic. It kind of set the mode. The Parade Committee, they worked tirelessly to get this off, along with the Police Department. Everybody did their piece. It was so wonderful to see a large hometown community come together and make this such a success this weekend. It was phenomenal, fabulous, whatever the words, the adjectives you want to describe. And I just want to thank all of you for being here tonight. It is appreciated that you take time out to come and join us and continue to learn about what's going on in our city and helping us help you. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. And I'll close this out. It was, I want to start with, it was an honor for me to be able to recognize Mr. Dupuy as well as the two cross-country athletes. Due to Mr. Dupuy, my daughter actually passed her AP stats exam a couple of years ago, and she, she took his stats class. So that was nice. But yeah, those two runners worked really hard at the entire cross-country team and track and field programs. Those athletes put in a lot of work for, for what they achieve representing our community and our school. Also, I'd like to commend the Beautification Board and the Parade Committee, as well as all of the city departments in putting on the tree lighting and the Christmas parade over the weekend. Those are always great events. Always look forward to those events. And Mr. Ingram, I recall one time a couple of years ago, when you came up and spoke at the work session, sat at this table, and you addressed all these needs of transparency and communication, and resonated with, with what I, the way I felt this community should be run, with the way any government in this republic should be, should be run. And those are the ideas that I took, you know, out of college, majoring in history and taking political science classes like public policy and metropolitan government. And it's just, it's, it's how we should govern ourselves. We are a self-governing society. And it's very important to my colleagues sitting up here, as well as to Mayor Rosner, to deliver that for the people. And I appreciate your comments tonight. It's a work in progress, so bear with us as we try to tweak it. That's what went into this Rules of Procedure ordinance. I'm grateful that it passed tonight. Also, Chief Flynn, thank you for your service to our community. Glad you got the derecognition. I'm glad we were able to be a part of that tonight. That's.
I forgot to say one last thing. I was giving her credit. Kathy, thank you for what you did for our float this weekend. It was a lot of fun, a lot of tires, tireless hours, so I really do appreciate it. And the truck was the fascinating part. Everybody loved the truck. So thank you, Kathy.
No problem. My pleasure.
And with that, that's all I have. This meeting is adjourned.
We, wherever, oh, we don't. She wants you to sign this for the gentleman that drove the truck. Yeah, we got one item to sign down there by Madison. Yeah, Madison, have it, sir. Didn't forget to, I was gonna let it, trying to see if it was go down the line, but no. You should get recognition for that hard work. I know you did, but you weren't, or somebody gonna come behind. Nah, you did great, Tom. That was just, wait a minute, I gotta get all my stuff here.